Good evening and welcome to the July 27th meeting of the Civil Service Commission. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Guzarian.
Here.
Commissioner Abkarian.
Here.
Chair Devine.
Here.
For the record, Commissioner Yakubian and Commissioner Munukian are absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Minutes for the meeting of June 22nd, 2016.
Move to approve.
I suggest that we hold that off because I wasn't here and you need a majority.
Oh, you weren't.
Yeah, okay, we'll go on to the next item.
Oral communications.
I have no cards. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, please.
Recruitment and examination report.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this item is a note in file. It lists the recruitment workload currently amongst staff. As you can see, a lot of activity. In fact, it's a bit of an uptick in our work. Typically, we've been hovering around 50 recruitments, but right now, we're at 61. I think that comes with starting a new fiscal year. We've had some people leave and new positions approved in the budget, so it shows that we're at 61. But anyway, this report, as you know, shows all of our recruitment activities by department, whether it's open promotional, filing dates, and which staff is assigned. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Otherwise, again, this is a note in file.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item.
Eligible lists established.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this item is brought to you each month from our previous meeting, all of the lists that have been established. Once again, I'll say we continue to see not only a lot of activity, but processes that really do result in what I would say is pretty small lists, and I think it's a reflection of the challenging nature of a lot of our exams. If you look at just two of them for the Information Services Department, where we had one process that yielded 81 applicants, yet we were only able to get two names onto the eligibility list after all of the exams were done. And then another one, a security position in IS, 16 candidates and just one eligible candidate. So I think it's a reflection of just how hard some of these positions are to fill, particularly the engineering type, the types, the IT-related positions. And again, I think it's important to note that we really do put people through the wringer on these and really want to make sure that the people that we hire here at the city are well-qualified. So you also see on there the police lieutenant recruitment, which is promotional exam, and actually pleased to see 17 applicants file for that on a promotional basis. That's, I think, an all-time high, and I think it's a reflection of, I think, the outreach by this chief, as well as efforts he's made to work on succession planning. So that's one of the...I know it's the largest group of candidates I've ever seen in my career, and to have a list of 12 potential candidates is really outstanding, so we're happy about that. So again, this is a note in file item. If there's anything on this list that you want to ask, I'd be happy to try and answer those questions for you.
Okay, just have one question. If you have an open and a promo, would you...does this show...would it show in here open slash promo, or would it just say open, or how would it be categorized?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Abkarian, it would be categorized as promotional slash open, those types of recruitment. And for the commission's benefit, those are recruitments where we do throw them out to the general population, yet promotional candidates do get an advantage of...they pass the exam, they get placed on a promotional list, which comes before an open list. And that's, you know, it's one benefit that we do occasionally on these types of recruitments, and that's distinct from just a general open exam where everyone, both internal candidates and candidates from the outside, compete on more or less an even basis. But anyway, we don't have any of the promotional open on this go-around.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, please.
Class specifications for approval: Assistant Chief Information Officer and Deputy Chief Information Officer.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, these are, in fact, categorized as new specifications for your approval. In reality, this is a sort of a conversion of positions that we already have, or classifications that we already have in place within our IS department. The two positions, Assistant Chief Information Officer and Deputy Chief Information Officer, would be more or less parallel to an existing classification of Assistant Director of Information Services and Information Services Administrator. The last time we went out to recruit for the department head for this operation, we revised that job description and we gave it a new title of Chief Information Officer, which is a more contemporary title and set of functions for that particular field. And so we're merely extending that downward to the number-two position and those administrator-level type people, who will now be called deputies. Our intent would be to take those who are currently Information Services Administrators and laterally transfer them to Deputy Chief Information Officer with no compensation adjustment of any sort. It's a strict lateral move. And then we will go for a recruitment process to fill the Assistant Chief Information Officer. So again, this is more or less similar to what we...the structure we have in place now, but new titles. And certainly, Mr. Ganley, who's been here two to three years, has really wanted to put his touch on a lot of these jobs, and he's done some revisions to the essential functions and minimum qualifications. So I will apologize, Mr. Ganley could not make it. He had a pre-planned vacation, which was set long before we rescheduled this meeting to be tonight. So if you do have questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Ms. Abramian from my staff also put this all together, so.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have unanimous consent. That's approved. Next item, please.
For the record, Commissioner Yakubian has arrived.
Thank you, welcome.
Class specification for approval: Assistant to City Council Series.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is a revision of an existing class specification series, the Assistant to City Council Series. Back in 2014, this series was actually established to provide staff support to the Management Services Department and in the City Council in particular. At that time, we did establish three classifications within the series. There was the Assistant to the City Council, the Senior Assistant to the City Council, and the Executive Assistant to the City Council. I guess we kind of committed a blunder at the time, and we really only had the need to utilize two of these three classifications. And when we established the series, we omitted the middle one, the Senior Assistant to the City Council. Ultimately, we'd filled those positions at the time, and we've had some degree of turnover. A total of three individuals have left these various positions over the past, I'd say, year and a half to two years. So we are at the point where we want to fill these positions, and we would like to, in fact, utilize that Senior Assistant to the City Council classification. And thus, we're now inserting that into the previously approved specification. So again, if you have questions on that, any of the reorganizations and changes, turnover, again, I'd be happy to try and answer those for you. We do have Yasmin Beers, Assistant City Manager, here tonight as well, if you have questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have unanimous consent on that one. Thank you, Ms. Beers. Next item, please.
For the record, Commissioner Munukian has joined us. Class specification for approval: Chief Assistant General Manager and Water Services Administrator.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is a class specifications dealing with really the upper tier of our Glendale Water and Power Department's water section. What we're doing is creating a new specification for Chief Assistant General Manager for Water Services. We have this classification already in existence, but it's more focused on the electrical side and the power supply function. And what this first specification, which we're really...we're calling it a new specification because it is new to the water area, but we are creating this specification for the Chief Assistant General Manager for Water Services. The second specification is a revision to the existing specification for Water Services Administrator, and this is what would, in effect, be the number-two position within the Water Division of Glendale Water and Power. This specification was last revised in 2003, and it was in serious need of some revisions. Mr. Mike DeGhetto, who's been our Assistant General Manager for Water Services, has come about and looked at all of our job descriptions from top to bottom, and we'll be seeing a series of these brought before the commission, and we already have had a few already. But both of these positions are engineering-related. They both require the person to be a registered professional engineer. And again, the chief will oversee the entire division, both the office and the engineering side, as well as the field, because we have about 30, 40 field employees working in our water department. And then the Water Services Administrator will be focused solely on oversight of the engineering division. These types of positions are very, very hard to fill, particularly the high-level engineering positions that people who actually have experience in the utility field. So on the chief engineering side, the chief assistant engineer, we will probably go out and make a promotional recruitment for that. And then on the Water Services Administrator, it will likely be an open recruitment in the next month or so. With that, if you have questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. We also have Steve Zern, Assistant General Manager for Glendale Water and Power here.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Okay, I do have one question, I'm sorry. Do I understand these are new positions, they're not existing positions under another category that are being changed?
That's correct. Chair Devine, when you say new positions, we're not adding to the head count. These would be probably reallocations. On the Chief Assistant General Manager would be a reallocation of the Assistant General Manager. The Water Services Administrator would be a reallocation of a vacant engineering position that we had before. It was a principal engineer. So no new head count, but just...
Changing the names.
Changing the names and upgrading. The administrator is definitely an upgrade, and we kind of have to do this to be competitive and get good candidates.
I have one question, I'm sorry.
It's too late.
What is FLSA designation? What does that stand for?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Munukian, the FLSA refers to the Fair Labor Standards Act, and that's a federal law which mandates overtime for rank-and-file employees who work over 40 hours. When it says exempt, it means these are management-type positions that...
I see.
The FLSA does not apply to them.
Okay, I thought it was a specific designation for that field.
No, these are in all of our specifications. And for management positions, because managers are expected to work many hours beyond 40 hours a week, there is no overtime, so.
Yep, my recommendation for approval still stands.
Okay, then we have unanimous consent on that. And thank you, Mr. Zern.
Oh, Mr. Zern should probably stay.
Okay, we'll go to the next item.
Class specification for approval: Store Series.
This is why Mr. Zern should stay. This is also a series within the...now within the Glendale Water and Power Department. And what this is, it's a revision to an existing class series, much like the Assistant to City Council. We're inserting a new classification, a senior storekeeper, into this series. And there's quite a story behind this, but essentially, as a means to improve efficiency, we've consolidated the storekeeping, or the warehousing function here at the city. About five years ago, we did the same thing with our fleet and garages, where we previously had one in the Fire Department, we had one in the Water and Power Department, we had one in Public Works, we had one in Police, and we tried to consolidate them all together. And the same goes for warehousing. We found that it makes a lot of sense to have one single consolidated function, whereas the fleet was all combined and moved within Public Works. In warehousing, it's going to be in Glendale Water and Power, because they do have the largest warehousing operation now, and it just made sense. So we're taking employees from various departments, again, Fire, Public Works, and combining them all within GWP. And the effort to bringing them together is to have, again, a single leadership on this. And we thought the creation of a senior storekeeper to sort of be the assistant supervisor makes sense. There's a sort of a big gap between storekeeper and the mid-management position of store supervisor, so we thought this would be a good lead worker position and also provide some, you know, a career path for somebody who may want to become a supervisor someday. So that's basically the story here. Again, this is for your approval. If you have questions, either myself or Mr. Zern, I'd be happy to answer them.
Move to approve.
Second.
Unanimous consent. Thank you again, Mr. Zern. Next item, please.
Reports.
Mr. Chair, all we have is the Late Performance Evaluations Report. A little better this time than last month. Several departments have no past due evaluations, and there are a few that are out there, some stragglers. But anyway, for the most part, we're looking better than previously. It's a note in file item.
Okay, it's noted and filed.
I have one question, I'm sorry. Me being a greedy person, I am in reference to this. Could we bring this for some discussion in reference to why can't we have somebody who needs his evaluation to be done within 60 days, 90 days, and then we don't call it first...I don't understand, 73 days, it says first notice. I mean, they're waiting almost two and a half months just to get an evaluation, it's their first notice, so I don't understand why we can't do it. And the day that you give them an evaluation, they're supposed to have an evaluation to have, you know, 60 days and then 90 days. Go with days instead of going with notices, because I don't understand what notice is. If one is 58, the other one is 73, and they're both first notices. And I'm looking at some of the dates in here, before it was different, but when you look at the dates, they're pretty close, so I don't understand why they would be...so I want to just bring it back for discussion, I'm not saying we have to change it.
Mr. Chair, I can address that, and we did discuss this as per Commissioner Abkarian's recommendations. We actually did eliminate a...pushed this up a little quicker to require, yes, to require on second notices. Yeah, we can engage this discussion again. It is a bit of an administrative process for my staff. I have one person, Ms. Jagaspanian, who is responsible for collecting these evaluations citywide, and it helps to deal with them in blocks of one month as a group. And then, you know, if they're not there within that period of time, then they end up...and there is, there is about a 30-day cushion before it becomes a first notification or first warning, but...
But I mean, when it's 73 days, I mean, I don't want to open it, I mean, I don't want to start discussing it, because we don't have it on the agenda, but I'm just saying, like, May, by June 1st, that would be first notice, right? June 1st would be first notice. If somebody has May 1st as their evaluation date.
And that would make it a 43-day overdue, wouldn't it?
Okay, I think we're starting to get into discussion...
Why don't you put it on agenda and...
Yeah, let's agendize it, discussion on the reporting notices, evaluation notices, and for a future...
Yeah, I just want to make the record clear, Chair. We did put this on the agenda. We had extensive discussion, it wasn't even maybe three months ago. So we're redoing it and re-agendizing it. I think perhaps we should look at the minutes of what was decided three months ago as a starting point, if we are to re-agendize it and rediscuss it, because we did discuss this at Commissioner Abkarian's request.
Yeah, we did, and at that time, I felt that we had a solution to getting the notices out in a timely manner, but I have to say, I thoroughly agree with Mr. Abkarian's observation. In fact, I was going to bring it up if he didn't, that for a first notice to be 73 days out of date, to me, there's something not right there.
And not to have a discussion, but I think it is appropriate for me to ask the single question.
Actually, Tony has a comment, I think.
It is on the agenda, so you're free to discuss it.
I am, I know I am.
And perhaps what we could do is bring back not just the minutes from last time, but the original motion that established the dates, the frequency with which they should be reported, because I believe it was an action on the part of this commission. And maybe in the context of that, make it an action item, so you can then amend that motion if you choose to do something different.
Right, thank you, I appreciate the counsel with which I agree, and that is why I posed the question, that I believe I am entitled to ask a question. And the question that I would like to ask right now is, does 73 days, Mr. Doyle, mean 73 days starting from May 1st? It would, based on my calculations, correct? But that would also mean that it's really 43 days past due and not 73 days delayed from the date that an evaluation is to take place? Unless we're saying that 5/1 is the day that the relevant employee is entitled to receive an evaluation, and since 5/1, 2016, the day that the employee was entitled to receive an evaluation, now 73 days have elapsed and the employee has still not gotten the evaluation.
Commissioner Guzarian, it is 73 days from 5/1, the day that it's due, but it's not necessarily due on that date. It's the...what that amounts to is the end of that employee's annual period to be evaluated. So the person writing that person's evaluation has essentially from May 1st of one year to May 1st of the next year to do that evaluation, and then serve it as timely as possible.
Did you say one year from that?
These are annual evaluations.
Okay, so from the time that it's due, they have one year?
No, no, no.
That's why I want to make sure I didn't...
No, the employees are to be evaluated over the duration of a year.
But a supervisor...
A supervisor, and a lot of them put a lot of effort into these. I personally spend hours writing evaluations, because I want to do them right. But, you know, to say, okay, you know, I'm going to evaluate Manya Hunanian or, you know, January 1st of 2015 to January or to December 31st, 2015, and expect to cover that whole period and expect to have that in, like, on the 31st, it's a bit unrealistic for most of our supervisors. So there has to be some amount of time, a few weeks, to enable them to account for that full year, and then write the evaluation, make a draft, and sit down with the employee and meet with them, pass it to the, you know, sometimes they have to go up the supervisory chain within a department before it gets to my department for processing, so...
And that's what I was saying, 60 days should be...
There needs to be some pushing.
Commissioner, you could be... Commissioner Yakubian had a comment.
I actually have a question as well. I just wanted to make sure that this now reflects what was decided during that last meeting.
I don't know.
Because I don't know whether that, you know, what the answer to that question is.
That's a very good question. And to me, the fact we're having this discussion right now tells me it did not or does not or did not meet with our understanding of what we wanted. And that's why I think we should follow our attorney's advice and schedule this and have this discussion in detail.
We will, and I think that's a great suggestion. But I want to remind everyone, with your permission, Mr. Chair, that Mr. Doyle said exactly what he said just now, last time we had this discussion. And that's why I was queuing him, so I made sure that what he said last time, I understood. And what I understood last time is the same thing he's repeating this time. So that for our next discussion, let's be clear. When a period begins, and let's assume the period ends today for an employee. It started last year, July 26 or July 27, and it ends July 27 of this year. To expect a supervisor to write an evaluation due on July 27 today, evaluating the employee all the way up to today, would be not only unreasonable, it's unfair to the employee, there I say, Mr. Doyle. Because maybe your employee, on this day, the very last day of his annual evaluation period, will do something magnificent or will do something horrible. And that should be part of the annual evaluation consideration. So you said, Mr. Doyle, if I may recall correctly, that there generally is a 30-day period. So when the period is May 1st or July 27th, a 30-day period is established protocol and standard for that report to be generated. If it's due May 1st, it's really due May 31st or June 1st. My gripe or my concern was that Mr. Abkarian raised the 73-day... which, when you look at 73 days, it looks outrageous. Yeah, I agree. But is it 73 days or is it 43 days, based on what you explained to us last time? I think it was 43. It is 43 days if you take the 30 out.
If you're the grace period out.
Right. So but now, how it's being put on a chart is a bit confusing, Chair Devine, and I agree. So schedule it for another discussion. Why not? Thank you.
And just to clarify, from my understanding was that after the 60 days, if each notice period is 30 days, you know, plus the cushion, then after 60 days, would that be a first notice or would that be a second notice?
Now, it's second.
Right. So we have 73 days, accounting for the cushion, that's another, you know, another 43 days. So that should technically be, according to my understanding, a second notice. So the question is, why is it a first notice?
No, with the cushion, it's a total of 43 days. The 73 days includes the 30-day cushion.
Right.
But is the question taken in consideration in this column or not?
That's the only thing. I understand the cushion. This is the reason I brought it up. I understand the cushion of 30 days.
But is it...
I understand the cushion of 60 days.
Yeah.
My whole point is, after 60 days, it shouldn't be considered a first notice. I don't care when it is.
Right.
And after 60 days, it should be a...
Second notice.
Somebody should come in.
After 60 hard days or 60 post-30 cushion days?
60 hard days.
60 hard days.
Yeah. From the date of the evaluation is done, you have 60 days to complete it, and that gives you plenty of time to talk to the employees, go through the management, do whatever you need to do. So 60 hard days from the date that's due. I understand. I mean, you don't, on April 31st, you can't say, okay, now on May 1st, get it done.
Except there's no 31st day in April.
My question is this column.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But the question is this column. Now, does that mean 73 days over and above the 60-day cushion?
No.
Okay. That's...
No. This is a hard date.
Hard date.
After May 1st, it's 73 days.
These are hard 73 days, yeah.
Okay, I think we have a direction. We'll be talking about it in the future. Thank you, Mr. Abkarian, for bringing that up.
I don't know if you need to take...
You did not break my record.
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, we do have sufficient number to approve minutes from the previous meeting, if you care to do that.
Let's read the item into the record, please.
Okay, and I think we have one extension, Mr. Abkarian.
Can we read the item into the record?
Listen to the adjournment. Minutes for the meeting of June 22nd, 2016.
A move to approve.
That's from reading. Second.
I abstained.
I have four yeses and Mr. Abkarian's abstention.
Then we move to adjourn.
Oh, well, we still have to have civil service and staff comments.
My comment is we move to adjourn.
My second is comment.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you.